With City Council.
Okay. And you'll. Okay. Discussion, possible action, motion to approve the final platification, zero four dash zero six dash two zero, road two three for Caldwell County Appraisal had property ID number twelve two seven nine zero. Can you post that up there?
So, hi, everyone. About earlier this year in February, January, I mean, we were reviewing the Sahota Holdings application for a final plat and other changes, but today we're only considering a final plat. The final plat is on page four of your agenda packet. Earlier that year, Steve Ramsey provided some comments with his engineer letter. This is a revision of the original final plat. So here are the comments of our engineer. Since of the original final plat, since then, our engineer has recognized that the new final plat, which is on your screen, have been corrected. My recommendation, counsel, is to approve the final plat, given our engineer has approved all the corrections of the initial final plat.
Karen March would like to be recognized.
Good evening. My name is Karen March. I live in San Marcos, Texas. I just noticed that on the exhibit, the address is one eight three eight three San Marcos Highway, and this one is the one that hasn't been corrected.
Right. So these are, these are the corrections that our engineer had requested initially, and these are now the improvements made.
Yes.
So all, all the issues mentioned in the original letter have been met.
And the address is correct.
That's right.
Yes, I brought a copy of the corrected.
Is, is our engineer, is he on Zoom or is he here?
I believe he won't be in today.
Okay. So just to confirm that he had no issues with the plat, no, no problems at all?
The check, the list that he's mentioned in the original letter have all been checked off by.
Okay. So he has no issue, as our engineer has no issue.
Is there, this drawing then reflects the changes? The one, the drawing on the left?
Yes, yes. Right. So all the changes that are made in the original letter are now translated and now mapped.
Is there a way you can just describe it quickly, what, what the changes were?
Well, some of the setbacks from the highway showing where the five hundred year flood plain was originally, the five hundred year flood plain was not marked on the final plat and now is, and now has to correct setbacks. And now the details on the sides now are all correct, including an address, signatures and phone numbers are now up to date. But those are the main comments our engineer had.
So the lines going up straight, parallel, is that, what is that? It's hard to, I mean, of course, I could see here, but what does that describe there? Is that eight eighty there?
Oh, so here is Highway eighty. It shows you the entrances, and if you drive up Highway eighty, you'll be able to see these ramps towards the lot. And these, these, these parallel lines here is that the water line. But yet here are the three entry and exits to Highway eighty. You'll find that there's no entry or exits from to northwest of a road.
And TechCon has approved those drive, driveways?
They're existing.
They're existing.
They're existing, yeah. But what if, what if the driveway needs to be made wider than what is described on that plat?
Then we'll have to go to TechCon and give them, but that's after the plat.
Yeah.
We can't make any applications until we have the plat proved and recorded so that then we can move forward with doing the site plan that I came in and talked to the historian group about and all of that. But the, the map has to be reported in order for me to go to the next level.
There's the person. Want to add any comments or?
No, the only thing less is that that, on that, on that one, we figured out that the address was San Marcos Highway instead of eighteen, eighteen three eight three River Road. It's San Marcos Highway. The address is on San Marcos Highway.
That's right.
Does the plat show elevation then, since some of it's in the flood, the floodway? And that, that needs to be described in an engineer type drawing?
It will be shown on, it will be shown on the site development permit when we submit it to you.
This is just, this is the first step.
Okay.
This is just our plat.
Right. I was just saying, since it's mentioning the flood plain so much and the engineers comment that you would think in the flat drawing that there would be some mention of elevation or any, anything in regard to flooding on that property.
Well, it, it does mention that it is point two percent in five hundred year flood plain. Now, as far as elevation, this, this is showing your underground utilities, entries. It's a very two D map for future reference, i- if there's any amendments that needs to be made on the property. A topographical data probably won't be applicable to a final plat.
It never is.
But your site plan would have that in there.
That's right.
So the next step with the site plan would show elevation.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any comments for council?
I wanted to go ahead and make a motion to approve the final plat application, zero four dash zero six dash twenty twenty-three for the Caldwell County Appraisal District, property ID twelve twenty-seven ninety.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second. Vote. Have you got this?
Well, any more discussion?
Well, I'm sorry, any more discussion?
No, that's generally what's said.
I know, I know. It's for discussion.
No more discussion. I vote aye.
So you vote aye, I vote aye. The motion passes? Or zero?
And a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn our planning and zoning meeting at six forty P M.
All in favor? Aye. Adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. I'll be back with the site plan.
Thank you. Appreciate your professionalism.
Okay. It is six forty-one on April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and I call this regular city council meeting to order. And we will do the roll call again. Mayor Protan Villalobos, Councilmember Bunker, Councilmember Styler is absent, Councilmember McClapp, Councilmember Clinton, and I'm Mayor Hayes. Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And then please remain standing for the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord God, for this rain that you have given us today, and thank you for this beautiful city of Martindale. And Lord God, please be with us as we make important decisions. Give us discernment and just guide us in everything that we say and do. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay, and we have two public comments. The first one is Mary Beth Harper.
This is news from the library. Kite day was held this past Saturday in Mitch Park. It was very successful. This year, we had a hundred and forty-nine folks who attended. That's twelve point four percent of Martindale's population. First year, we did this, there were a hundred and nine. Last year was a hundred and twenty-nine. This year's one forty-nine. We had kites, soft rockets, frigs begone, bubbles and Mentos. Thanks to Sam, Angela Flatimer from Lower the Park and pulling up all the invasive weeds and for the city that put up the do not mow signs where the wildflowers are planted. And also thanks to our volunteers from Phi Gamma Delta Fraternity and Cal Maida Sorority. We have twenty volunteers there. Okay, this is what a city park is for, for, for folks to gather, enjoy the fresh air and play games. We would not have had the turnout or the volunteers if they had to pay to park. Personally, I would not be able to volunteer and bring my park loaded with gear for this festival. And a second item, the library's hosting tax aid. And so far, they have completed the hundred and seventy returns, and there are just a few openings until April eighteenth, and open only on Tuesdays. Call the library for a appointment. Third item is a free legal advice clinic next Thursday from five thirty to seven thirty in the library. Hundred fifteen minute sessions with attorney, divorce, foreclosure, landlord issues, whales estates, any other kind of non-criminal legal issues. And if you have any questions, call the library. Fourth item, the library will be closed by April nineteenth through twenty-second so the staff can attend the Texas Library Association Conference. They will be accepting several awards and grants and attend workshops to stay current on best practices. But we are getting statewide recognition for our little library and the Small Community Library of the Year for the whole entire state of Texas is Carol Devini.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Ms. Devini. We appreciate that. Okay, our next public comment is Joy Youngers.
Hello, city council, mayor, staff, everyone. Last week, the San Marcos Planning and Zoning Board narrowly voted five to four to recommend a change from future development to heavy industrial zoning for an additional five hundred and eighty-eight acres in Caldwell County as part of the smart terminal. It was heartbreaking. On April eighteenth, the San Marcos City Council will vote on this recommendation. This is what we know. The developer Clayton Kendall has stated he is willing to come back to the table and negotiate and renegotiate the development agreement if things don't go his way this time around. Number two, the developer has already purchased all the land parcels and he wants to be annexed into San Marcos city limits so that he doesn't have to come up with all the infrastructure. Number three, the developer has stated numerous times he has no potential vendors, not even speculatively. He can't even promise local jobs because he doesn't know if the end users will rely on robotics or bringing their own workers in, et cetera. Since they have no potential vendors, there is no substantial reason or demonstrable need for heavy industrial zoning. Number four, to the new tracks include significant tributaries of the San Marcos River. Track three, that parcel closest to the junction of Highway eighty and one forty-two also overlaps a portion of Martindale's wellhead protection area. Wellhead protection areas, that surface or, and subsurface area regulated by T C E Q and the Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board in cooperation with the EPA to prevent contamination of a well supplying a water, a public water system. Number five, these properties are separated from the ETJ agreement, or separate from the ETJ agreement Martindale made with Sam, the city of San Marcos in twenty nineteen when Quintera was the development, was developing the smart terminal. Presently, the proposed smart terminal is two thousand seventeen acres or about three and a half miles square spanning from west of State Highway two one ten all the way to one forty-two. Not only will it be visible day and night from our scenic corridor, it will dwarf Martindale. There has been no public input from the city of Martindale or Caldwell County officials on this critical matter, and residents are feeling hopeless. Please be the voice of concerned Martindale residents and ask San Marcos to minimize the negative impacts to the river, to traffic, to environment, to our drinking water and to the peaceful enjoyment of our homes by voting not to expand the heavy industrial zoning and to consider welcoming the smart terminal into San Marcos city limits with reasonable modifications to their development agreement. Don't let a monstrosity on the north side of Highway eighty with graffiti rail cars that eighty feet high be the gateway to Martindale. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have two proclamations to read for the Hayes Caldwell Women's Clinic. And the first one is on Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas more than sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Texas in two thousand twenty-two, resulting in nine thousand six hundred and twenty-three children in foster care in Texas and the death of one hundred and sixty-five children in Texas in two thousand twenty-two. And whereas a hundred and nineteen children were confirmed victims of child abuse in Caldwell County. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. And whereas locally representatives from Caldwell County Child Welfare Board, Caldwell County District Attorney's Office, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center and Roxanne Spouse, Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, court-appointed special advocate, which is CASA, Lockhart, Luling and Martindale Police Departments, Caldwell County Sheriff's Office and Krista Santa Rosa Hospital have joined forces to provide preventative and supportive services to child victims and their families. And whereas every child in Martindale deserves to be safe, nurtured and supported in caring relationships, and therefore I, Catherine Glaze, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Martindale, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April twen- two thousand twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and do hereby call upon the citizens of Martindale to work together to raise awareness and prevent child abuse in our community and, and beyond. And we have signed it. And then the other one is about sexual assault awareness and prevention month. Whereas six point three million Texans have experienced some form of sexual assault in their lifetime. And whereas two in five women and one in five men in Texas have been sexually assaulted in their lifetime affecting all races, ages, genders and economic situations. And whereas the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided direct services to six hundred and sixty adult victims of sexual assault in Hayes and Caldwell Counties last year. And whereas the city of Martindale is intolerant of sexual violence in any form and recognizes that education and awareness may prevent sexual assault. And whereas efforts to reduce sexual assault can only be successful through chi- through citizen involvement and the safety of the citizens of the city of Martindale depends upon our actions to end sexual assault. Therefore, I, Catherine Glaze, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Martindale, Texas, do hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. And I think the representatives are here to accept these. And I'd like the city council to join in the picture.
I could take it a instant.
Well, I, maybe I can have Dewayne take it real quick. Do you guys want to come and join?
Sure.
We've got a small room.
A small room in a small town.
Here, let me get on this side over here.
Thank you. Ready?
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sure. Go right on.
All right, I just have a couple of things that I wanted to say. First, I wanted to thank the esteemed council very much for recognizing April as Child, Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is a big, important month for us and our organization. So I am a representative, my name's Rob Edwards. I'm a casework supervisor with CASA of Central Texas. We are one of the agencies represented by the proclamation read here tonight. When a child is removed from their home, they've been abused or neglected, they enter the foster care system and all the moving parts that come with it. Our CASA volunteers are appointed by the judge overseeing their case to advocate for the best interest of the children and they, as they navigate the court system. Again, thank you to this council for bringing recognition to this, to this issue that we all wish we could pretend didn't happen. Unfortunately, in two thousand, or in twenty twenty-two, our program served five hundred and sixty-two children, but there were still an additional three hundred and nine children that did not have a volunteer because we're always needing more volunteers with CASA of Central Texas. To help spread the awareness of the month, for the month of April, we have created a Bruises Are Blue campaign where we ask community members to paint their nails blue to represent the bruises that come with child abuse. We also ask that you share your blue nail photos on social media and tag CASA of Central Texas with the Bruises Are Blue hashtag. We encourage you to participate or share with someone who will. We would also like to let you know that we'll be hosting our annual dinner and dance event on April twenty-eighth at the Green Chandeliers. This year's theme is going to be tailgating with Team CASA. I was just notified that we are sold out for that event, but if you would like to participate in the silent auction, notices will be sent out soon and they will be on our, on our website for that.
Online silent auction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, of course, our citywide cleanup is April twenty-second, and that did go out in our utility bill a week or, gosh, it's been a couple of weeks ago now. And it's on our website, and I'm, I'm intending to take a flyer around to each house, especially in the downtown area, and let them know about that. And any houses that might really need it, I'm going to make sure they have a flyer.
One more time, one more time.
It's going to be eight A M. to whenever it's filled up. We've got eight dumpsters coming, and it'll, they'll be at Southwest River Road, nineteen seventy-nine, Southwest River Road, just like last year.
Can we get Sean McDonald to help?
I ask him, yeah, we'll, we'll see if he's. I'll, I'll, I'll remind him.
Yes, that's so handy to have a loader.
And we've got six volunteers coming from Gary Job Corp.
Great.
And we've got Tom Fudge lined up to be available for anybody like widows that don't have a way to get their stuff to, like he did last year. He has a trip, he has a city trailer and his truck where he can go and get stuff and bring it to us. So if there isn't any more questions about that, we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
So we have, we have our own trailer?
Yeah. Tom Fudge usually has it, but we license it.
And I really plead with Glenn, with Sean McDonald on that. And so.
Yeah, that was really.
We almost got to have something like that. That means the.
Okay.
Not as strong as I used to be.
Okay, we'll move on to city administrator report.
So I just want to give an update on the towing services request for proposals. Tonight, we're going to be talking about paid parking in parks and other areas. And part, as we've discussed in city council meetings and workshops before, one, one of the major enforcement actions will be, tools we'll be using to enforce payment is a towing service. So a question for proposals has been developed, coordinated with the chief. He had some comments, him and I need to link up to, to discuss some of those, but we should have that out soon and keep us on track for hopefully Memorial Day. Go live on our parking enforcement if, if the city chooses to proceed later this evening to go with the paid parking ordinance.
And chief already has, TechCon has put out the signs, no parking on nineteen seventy-nine.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. Because that's a safety issue.
And so you mentioned before that the towing company would pay for the signs?
Yeah, part of the, the contract, we would require them to post the signs. There's certain requirements put out by the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, T L R, that describe exactly what the look, size and font and, and other things of the size. And so we've incorporated those requirements into our contract proposal and then place those requirements on the successful bidder or bidders, depending on how we go. Part of the unique thing about this is not only is it a parking enforcement, but also having a contract with towing companies or wrecker services really helped us out with traffic accidents along Highway eighty to get those cleared quickly. And we're looking forward to how to best serve both those needs within one contract without making it two burdensome on them, so.
And so later we'll discuss how long down Northwest Road we will put the signs or if they'll be on quail run. I mean, we, I'm, I'm just envisioning with signs along the road that people will park past the signs, you know?
I think tonight, we're, we're going to focus on those areas where the city council in workshop settings in prior discussions mentioned they would like to see paid parking in the parks that have river access, river access points. Northwest Road was, was left off of that list for now. And if that's a desire on the part of the council, that could be part of a future meeting.
We're just talking about phase one and Alan Bates. I have a question for you. I noticed, I noticed y'all have a car there on, on nineteen seventy-nine by, by the park, phase one. Do you, are you having a lot of people speeding there?
I haven't gotten a whole lot. I mean, every now and then I'll get a few, but it's, it's pretty rare. Mainly just preventative to keep people slowed down before that curve.
Well, that's, that's another thing about the TechCon having that no parking, because that, that's a potential hazard for.
So that, like you said, the signs are already put up. I know chief asked about, or council asked about possibly having crosswalks and stop signs at Southeast River Road and at Main Street. TechCon says that's a no-go. They won't put anything else up on nineteen seventy-nine.
That's all.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the city accountant report.
Oh, boy.
Do your thing.
All right, there's our bank statement balances as of the fourth, couple of days ago. You see our normal operating accounts at First Lockhart Bank, total one hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Our emergency fund has two hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Interest earnings are pretty good this year on that. It continues to grow. You see the Public Funds Investment Act Fund with all its various designations, the largest balances are in grant funds received, not yet expended, and just overflow of general funds. Cash flow that will begin burning off now that the property taxes are largely collected. Then you see the bottom number due to control of the fines. That number continues to drop below two hundred, no, three hundred thousand dollars. Hopefully, it'll be below two hundred before we know it. That's our balances that we have. Our next report should be the general fund budget report through February, forty-two percent of the year complete. See, the property tax revenue, almost all collected. One thing I noticed is the third line, the municipal court revenue at fifty-one thousand one forty-eight is at forty-eight percent of budget. Forty-two percent is the target through five months. So you can see that one is running a bit of plan for the first time in a few years. Next section down, personnel. Next section down, personnel, you look at the far right column, 37% of budget. So that section is under budget expenditures. See the payroll reimbursement from the utility that helps offset expenses of collecting utility bills, transfers over from the utility fund. Regular operating expenses, just kind of month-to-month bills. That section is at just under 40%. So that's on plan. And then other things, I'm not quite sure what miscellaneous is. I'd have to look, but keep going and you will see contractual things. $64,000 of contractual expenses, 38% of budget. So that section is going well. So net income over expenses through February, 267,910. And you see in the second column there, the budget balances to zero and that's the target by the end of the year. So the next section should be expenditures, checks written basically in the month of February. Kind of scroll down through there and let people see the details of what the money was spent on.
Oh, I had a question, I'm sorry, about vehicle repair and maintenance. It was the, it was back there, but we spent 116% of that so far. I guess we had other things to take care of with the vehicles and so we'll just have to take money from somewhere else if we have other items that come up that need to be fixed on the vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's one other bill I have on my desk right now, about $500 for a tire. You know, a lot more activity with two police cars on the road nowadays. And the Ford required, you know, some extensive repairs at the beginning of the year. I mean, to the tune of $4,000 or $5,000.
So we would just take it out of, say, the general fund or?
You know, it is spent out of the general fund. Whether or not we're going to amend the budget for being over, I'm not sure if we necessarily have to do that.
I just noticed that 116% we're only halfway through.
We're fortunate it wasn't all four tires.
And it wasn't a police car through a barn or something like that. Next report should be the utility fund. I don't know, that's outstanding bills. We used to have a, like a consent item where y'all would approve whether or not I could pay those bills. I'm not sure of the formality of that, but similar to like a missioners court does. Okay, utilities, you see here at 139,000 in income, 43% of budget. So that is on plan. For the year-to-date, expenses, I believe they are too, if you look at the subtotal, 42%. So that looks good. At the income over expense so far in the utility fund. Next one should show details of the expenditures. Now we want to marry there. One little unpaid bill to the water department. Next is probably the special revenue fund. And you see the various revenues there that go into into this fund. Most of the line items are related to the court. And we've only spent a little bit of tech expense. That's that software that the court uses. I don't know if there's anything else. I think that's it, other than a Glee Adrian wants to discuss the solid waste rates. They adjust every year in May according to contract. And there are the latest numbers that the bills will be adjusted to in May.
So this month you can expect about a little bit less than a dollar raised on your bill. This is just our procedural thing that we do every year with TDS of our 10-year contract. This is from our cut of ordinances table for solid waste rates. So next bill, you'll see your trash is going to be valued at $34.39 from $33.44. Just so you know.
That's because the contract with the TDS also escalates every year. So it just goes up the same amount.
And what are the months of the year that they calculate the water rate?
That'll be December, January and February.
They're two different things. These are solid ways. And the water is the sewer.
That won't happen until maybe November, I believe.
That ending, the rates don't aren't calculated until November.
Is that right, doing? Sounds about right.
Well, I think we try it for the, you know, first month in the fiscal year, so October.
Yeah, so this is solid way.
Yes, okay.
That's really the
So that's the, I guess, the finance report.
Good. Thanks, John. Thank you. Well done.
Should be the wastewater management report. Pete won't be able to come in today. He had to excuse himself. Attached, you'll see.
He had a family emergency.
That's right. But if you guys want to take a minute to glance at your March report for the wastewater system, take a few minutes if you like. I have it blown up on the screen.
Are we still going to discuss?
Are we going to get in that slide removal?
Yeah, that'll be later in the discussion action items, but he does state that our shore, we need to clean our shorelines, the lift stations. Yeah, some of this is repeated from the February report, but we'll be addressing those items more later today.
Hasn't been irrigating very much now. I'm going to ask him about that.
It's been kind of dry.
I think so.
Until drought situation, but it's startling, maybe.
He says the ponds are pretty low, so.
So it's best not to irrigate.
Well, it wouldn't have.
No, you wouldn't have to unless you ponder getting physical levels of ponds.
No irrigation this month, or in the month of March. Let's see that unless there's any other comments or questions.
So at this time, we will, are we going to recess into or have a presentation first?
Do you guys want to talk to any, so I'll give the city council an update in a little while. So last time we spoke regarding the grafted development agreement, or not development agreement, mud request for a resolution to endorse the mud, part of a legislative effort. There's also a term sheet that was provided to the city that we reviewed. Myself, our engineer and our attorney reviewed that term sheet and provided the developer some edits. They only received a copy of that this afternoon. So I know that they, they had some concerns. I don't know if you want to speak to those now. I gave us a list we can talk about in executive session as council on.
What is the deadline for y'all to put your mud application in, let's look?
So we are getting very close.
So can you give me a?
There's no, there's no.
What's the deadline?
With a local bill, there's no deadline, but we have to, we have to file the bill and ask to go to House Committee and ask to go vote for that.
So I guess the question I ask, what is the deadline to file the bill, I guess?
So for a local bill, there is no deadline. For a general bill, the deadlines was, I think it was March 15th, it started to pass. For a local bill, you can file it late. But the session only goes to May 31st. So if we don't get it filed pretty darn quick, we're not going to get it through the House and the Senate. So if y'all, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last time. I'm Josh Khan. Julianne Kugel, who was here last time, was my law partner. She had an event at her kid's school tonight, so y'all understood with me. So yes, we got the term sheet this afternoon from Jared and Kent. I think we're very close. Like we, there's a few things that we'd like to talk about. There's a few things our engineers need to look at, in particular the waste discharge. I know that's a big issue to you guys. So we, we want to be able to meet what you guys want us to meet, but we need to have our engineer look at it to see if we can meet it with what we have planned. If not, what it's going to cost us to upgrade to me if that upgrade is even feasible. So what I would like to propose, if y'all are okay with it, like I said, we're committed at this point. We want to work with you guys. You know, I think some of the things we've, we've heard your concerns with needing a strip annexation. We trying to be just the money for road repairs. So we'd like to see if y'all would consider letting us continue to work on the term sheet for the next couple of weeks, but I do think we're close. But in the meantime, if y'all would go ahead and get us the no rejection resolution so we can get that bill filed with the legislature and get that moving forward again. Even if we did create the legislature, you still have to get your city consent. So we can't, can't do anything without city consent. So that's kind of what we're proposing. But the issues that we had with the term sheet, the new term sheet said that there was no vested rights and I understand that's because the bubble plan that was submitted was kind of vague as to what we were going to have. So I just forwarded Kent and Jared an email from Chris. He actually sent it to the wrong group. We sent a list of items that we would like to discuss. If y'all want to look at that in closed session, one was the vested rights. We could agree to be R4 at a minimum. I think last time it said R4 average. The roadway fee, there was no cap on it. We'd like a cap on it just so we can kind of plan. The bond timing at the bottom was through 2048, I believe. But mud bonds are typically issued in 25-year terms. So that would put us, if we did 2048, we'd have to issue all the bonds by like the end of this year, which is obviously not going to happen. So we'd like to push that out to some, maybe 10 more years if possible. The wastewater treatment plant standards that we talked about, we'd like our engineer to have time to look at that. And then there was an item in there about future maintenance that Jared and I talked about, just kind of clarifying that. But then again, I think, you know, we're committed. We want this deal to work. We want to be partners with the city. So we're hoping that we can get something done.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Matthew, what did you want?
I wanted, can I say it on the half of her?
Yes, you can.
Now's a good time?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, administrators, fellow citizens. My name is Matthew McGovern. I live at 213 Northwest River Road with my wife and family. I wish to make a few comments regarding this creation of this mud and development agreement regarding PID number 27698, 27700, 27746 initiated by City of Graff. First, please understand that I understand that development is a natural process. A supply and demand is present for it. With regard to this particular piece of property, I'm perplexed that only one option is presented before the city council regarding a wastewater solution for this development and future developments. To begin with, I'm concerned about the number of homes being built per acre. Are these developers going to adhere to the 20% impervious cover requirement that we had, that we passed last year? What about the lot sizes? R1 is half acre lots. The proposed map, which was attached to the previous meeting, indicated a total 1,500 homes on a buildable area of 260 acres. That includes the roads. So the actual lot size would be smaller than that. This equates to lot sizes less than 0.17 acres, which is smaller than any other lot in size that the city limits currently, or roughly 7,400 square feet. In addition, as with all endeavors, there is a profit element present. This mud creation is a profit center for the developer in addition to the profit in the build out. I understand that this mud is exclusive to the benefit of those who pay for the mud in lieu of property taxes until this paid off. And as we just indicated, it's going to be even further out than we originally planned. Those wastewater plants, which will fall under the mud, will only benefit those homes in that development only, as opposed to all the other needs that we have within the city. Why has no other option been presented by the city of Martindale to the councilor's residence regarding this matter? Why have no grants or other financial solutions ever even been considered? And if so, why was not presented in the last meeting saying that they're not a good solution, but this is the best? Explain it. That's all. For example, the city of Martindale recommends this solution, this mud, because of why? All that's ever presented is the party who comes forward between this council and says that this is our money and this is how we want to spend it here. Please approve it. Alternatively, I'm concerned about the push to get this approved so quickly. This is a big issue for the city and something that I, as a future city council person, am going to have to do for an extended period of time. I would like to point out that there are already been errors, simple ones, while they're not putting the correct PID number on the agreement and notice of the meeting as of last Tuesday. No one's error that was presented in this room, but it was an error. I urge the council to please be patient and thorough before making decisions regarding this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, Jason with grafted. Can I say something?
Yes, you may.
I just want to be, I just want to clarify that the intent and the ask is for consent of legislation. As Josh talked about it, is as we work through a development agreement that requires time and different back and forth and come to those type of agreements of what's vested for the city, for our project. We've had some great conversations with our neighbors to the north just since our last meeting and there's great synergy there. So our approach is that of how can we help? But I would be very clear, the ask is for consent to move to legislation, not, we still want to and will continue to work through a development agreement. That's not going away. We're not rushing through a development agreement. It's really just to, on the consent of legislation based on the time of session we're in now.
So this is, you have to get approval by the legislature to, in order to get the mud?
We don't. There's another path through TCQ to get a mud. Takes longer. It's a longer process.
Legislature going to vote on?
So I'll let you verify this or validate this for me. He's the mud attorney. Is there's, there's no negative implications for the city of Martindale for providing consent of legislation to the mud, right? It only allows for a path for us to create a mud through legislation. If we, I'll fast forward, hope we don't get to this point, but if we go through creation or it goes through legislation, right? The consent is given. It goes through, the mud is created. We don't come to terms on a development agreement. There is zero impact to the city of Martindale for that being created. There's no legal power in that. Am I accurate in saying that? I'll let you add the color to that. Yeah.
I don't remember voting on something like this before.
Yeah, so there's two ways to create a mud, either through the DCQ or through the legislature. So it just so happens that with timing right now, we can do it through the legislature and get it done quicker and easier.
How much quicker is it going through the legislature versus the DCQ?
If we get to the legislature, we can have it done by June 1st. We go through DCQ, it's at least a year. But both of them require city consent. And we're not asking for city consent to the creation of the district tonight. We're just We're just asking for city, city no objection, not necessarily consent to legislation, support legislation, no objection to the legislation so that we can move forward. So both the state senator and the representative will not move to go forward if we don't have, if they don't have the resolution for you guys say that y'all are okay with us moving forward. But I have the draft of legislation, the, the it's a template bill is what it's called. So every mud that's created through the state has the same legislation if you want to see it.
I'd love to see it.
In the, in the legislation, on the second page in section blank dot one oh four, and the number will be assigned when it, when it goes forward, when it gets a bill number. But it says the consent of municipality department. So we, we can't hold an election, a confirmation election until the city, you guys have consented to the creation of the district. So even if this district, even if this legislature passes, it doesn't mean anything until we get your, your consent.
Will you get that to Jared, I'll be there.
So is it common for the legislature to to pass things?
Yes, so, so if you, if you look on.
There's no objection from the municipality.
So if you go to, you go on the legislature, Texas Legislature online website, pull up the committees and look at the Senate Intergovernor Relations Committee or the House Natural Resources Committee or House Land Use Committee and look at their list of what they go through. It's muds. I mean, they, they probably will approve a hundred of these things this session.
And it just takes longer to, for TCQ to go through.
There are beyond, of course.
The legislation, they have to do things on certain times during this time of year. So it is, it is, so it, when, when we have districts that are at this point and we can do it through the legislature, we always try it because we have the same powers if we go through the TCQ or through the legislature. It's just, again, timing. We're on this path, we have the train moving forward, if we can jump on, great. If not, we'll have to go through TCQ.
Okay, so it's.
Walk the council real quick through the, the rest of the process. You would, let's just say the city consents. The legislature, of course, does what it does and then it comes back to the city. If the city doesn't consent at that point to the creation, then help them with what happens.
So either way, the, the, the nuclear approach that we don't want to go to, there's a, there's a vague control of cram down. We can petition you for water and sewer service if you don't give us a contract for water and sewer service, then we go to TCQ and get the deal created. Anyway, we don't want to do that. That's, we want to partner with you guys, we want to make this work, so. But yes, there is, there is, the statutes do provide for a way to, if we don't get city consent.
Yeah, but, but we're a small town. We, we're just, we're not San Marcos, you know, we got a little bit of plant. It's, I mean, I can't ever see, I mean, we don't have the facility to do that.
So we, that's why.
I think that, I mean, I'm not a attorney, but I disagree. I mean, that type of strategy would maybe work in Houston or, or San Marcos, but I can't, a little, a little town like this. And if you do, I'd like to know a case of that. That, that seems kind of really farfetched.
We don't want that to work.
And I understand, I, I.
That seems very farfetched.
Right, I, I asked the question because I know that you didn't want to come out and, and say that. Because that, that would have been conflictational adversarially, and you're not trying to do that. But I, but I did want, I did want you to provide that information for the benefit.
I appreciate that.
That, that was my question and that was not you being adversarial.
And we, and we want to work with you guys on the expansion of your current plan and building a new plant to serve your residents as well as the mud residents and future city residents. We're hopeful we can get something done.
Okay.
Does it specify on here the tracts of land or?
Yeah, so.
Where is that?
It might not be here because we haven't filed a bill yet, but it'll be section two, it'll back, the section two will be the, the legal description of the district. Which is that approximately six hundred acres that we've been talking about.
So it hasn't been filled out? Which, which.
It's going to be, it's at the very end, it's section two, which it may just say section two. So yeah, this has about, you know.
It seems like if you know what the tracts of land are, that you would put that in there.
Section two.
So this is, this wasn't posted online yet?
This attachment?
I got this.
Where the dots are, I think.
That's from last meeting.
Jared, just to kind of like break it all down. I mean, they're just needing us to take it through the legislature just to expedite the process. Either way, they could still go to TCEQ and it's just going to take a little bit more time. If we as a city are like saying, okay, then that's whenever we're playing ball and we're saying, okay, the money that will come to the city for the streets. You know, we eventually will have them annexed into Martindale along with the utility. You know, Martindale taking over the utilities eventually, correct? If we do not, if we do not do this, they go through TECQ. They don't have to annex into Martindale. They could still just do everything through the county and then we wouldn't get anything for streets. Am I missing anything?
I don't know if it's dichotomous or is this or that. But I think their characterization on the whole is probably correct, that those, those potentials could, could happen.
They still could.
But that's Joshua.
Josh? So that's, that's a question for you.
So by doing, by doing this, one of the things on the term sheet is we're agreeing to a strategic partnership program, which gets you around the Senate Bill six where you can, and it's going to have an election, so it makes an automatic annexation at some point in the future. So that gets you around that. But yes, if if we have to do the cram down, which is the adversarial thing that I didn't want to mention because I don't want to go there. If we go that route, then yes, there's no, there's no development agreement at that point. So there's no requirement for us to pay for streets. There's no requirement for us to do the strip annexation. There's no requirement for us to do the SPA. So it could lead to eventually, when you guys want to annex down the road, you still have rights, but you'd have to have an election whenever that point.
And still, like, all of the building stuff would have to just be done since you're in Caldwell County. It wouldn't matter what Martindale says because you're going to do whatever Caldwell County and they're what they have.
We, we're in your ETJ, so we have to about for your, to your development standards. So either way, we have to adhere to your development standards.
Essentially the subdivision.
Your subdivision ordinance is.
Uh huh. Gotcha.
Can you, and, and that, and the subdivision ordinance is really a black and white sort of test. It's not something that the city can really leverage in any sort of way. If it meets the terms set up in the ordinance, then it's approved.
Can you, can you provide a brief statement of, of a city's authority over lot size within ETJ?
You're not supposed to have authority over lot size in ETJ. We can, in the development agreement, we can put, we can contract with that. So that's one of the things you want to do.
So it would be your position that the city could not regulate growth density or lot size? But the only way that you believe the city could regulate those things is through a development agreement. Okay. And what's the greatest benefit to Grafton having a development agreement?
I think they, one is they're partnering with the city, so it's not an adversarial relationship throughout this whole forty years that they're here and developing. So we want to be a partner. Two, they, they know what standards they have to adhere to. You know, there's no, but it's in black and white. If the county changes something, if you change something, we're, we're entitled to the development agreement because we're vested at that point. So.
Is, is there any ability to access infrastructure, water, wastewater services on the front end that is a benefit to Grafton that would? Okay, what is that?
Sorry, you're right. So y'all, from what I understand, y'all may have some capacity in your wastewater treatment plant now that they could use for maybe their first few houses until they get the new plant on the ground at the agreed upon place between the city and, and Grafton and the size of the plant, all that kind of good stuff figured out. What, what the F one is going to be, all that kind of stuff. There may be some use, some usefulness to them because they can use some of your capacity right away without having to build that plant.
And see, so whenever I hear that, that there's capacity, so there's capacity now. But what about developments that are going to come in and that are ready to, they're ready to go? And then, so how are we supposed to regulate, you know, developments who are ready to go now, but yet we're using our capacity? And we're saying that we have capacity for them whenever they're ready to build on down the road.
As of today, I'm not aware of any development that's ready to go. Though the only things that have happened recently that might indicate something to that, those ends have been a subdivision application for eleven lots. There, there, there's no other development that's made similar request on, on this. And to follow the term sheets to attend, if, if we eventually come to those agreements, would provide the city an avenue to accommodate those other developers in the future. So there, there would be an intervening period where potentially capacities is taken up and soon. And we're sitting, and we're waiting for a new plant to come online to provide additional capacity. That is a potential. That's something that we can work through on the, on the development agreement term sheet. Where, wherever we need to work through those considerations, we do that.
Eric stated that the access to the wastewater would be one of the primary reasons that Grafton would want a development agreement.
Because that, that wastewater treatment plant is a huge expense upfront day one.
And we got some, you won.
And you got some.
Yeah, we got some, you won, yeah.
If you, if we can use your some, whatever it's, whether it's ten lots or a hundred lots or whatever it is, we don't.
Does that help you with your, with your kind of your development if you do, if you can hook up me? The sooner you hook up, the, the better off you are.
Yeah, and, and on, I mean, from their, their return on the investment side, if they can push that, you know, five million dollar treatment plant down the road a year, whatever, it just saves their, their money, you got to do.
And so that, so the ability to access the wastewater would then be the, the reason that Grafton would give and agree to things that it would not otherwise agree to because by tying into the infrastructure in the short run, you're able to start making money, get the development going without spending that money upfront.
And then.
Let me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say that, you know, the strategic partnership agreement that allows you to annex and at, at the end of the project, whatever that date is that we come up to. That's something that we don't, we don't, we like to, we like to offer to cities because again, it gives you all path to annexation without having to go through an election. So it's, it's like one of the one things that we can offer you guys that says, we're here to play golf. Be at the table if you want to partner with you. And, you know, hopefully that's a, a good hearing for you at the end of the day because y'all have a, a direct path to annexation, not to go through the election.
Would y'all be willing to pay for an engineering analysis to see what our actual capacity is in our treatment plants?
I'll ask the guy to check back out on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we want to work with you guys if that's something, and I think. This gets, well, I was going to say, this gets into the, the other side of it, of the actual deal points agreement, development agreement, the things that we do, not the main thing of moving.
So, so Mike, if I, if I may, the, 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 today on a permanent level, there is some.
We've had this discussion before.
Some capacity.
And I, I know, I've never, I'll say it again, I've never got a, a really.
Your, your maximum number is three hundred homes. Your minimum number is twenty homes. That's the range that we're talking about.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Before we get too far down on this, I think what Grafton is saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that is the, the desire to tie into the wastewater infrastructure is of great importance. And so that is why Grafton will be coming back in a week, two weeks, a month, six months for development agreement. And if and only if the desire to tie into that wastewater infrastructure dissipates, we'll Grafton then say, thanks, guys, but we've got it worked out. Does that sound about right?
That's in a nutshell, that's a good summary, yeah.
I'm sorry for the cross examination.
No, it's good, it's good. So I think, again, you're exactly right. Y'all have something that we could use and we hopefully have something that we could give back to you guys.
I want to make clear that, that three hundred number, that's a re permitting application.
Yeah, that's, well, I don't want to get in that discussion again because we've been having that discussion. That's for, that's for permitting. That is not actually what our capacity is, but that's a whole nother discussion. So.
And that's one that the city should be having for us to find out as a city.
And we're going to.
Our engineer has looked at it, right? It, it's, it's not an exact size. We're not dealing with pots of water or pots of poop that we're filling up. Dictated by the number of pots.
I, I, I understand.
It's, it's.
But it were.
It's how much water can you leak out of those pots and when is what dictates their capacity. So it's not filling the ponds, it's emptying the ponds and how you empty the ponds and how much you do it and when you do it. I mean, it's literally the weather controls it. So like in March, you can't really do anything. So you have, you have to have enough pots to get you through March. But you only get in August, you can sprinkle all day long until most of it evaporates by the time it hits the ground. So it's, it's not, it's not a, a exact size. It's more of a Kentucky windage takes an engineer to.
The whole point I was getting back to is.
Well, you're not going to get a definitive number. You're not going to get a number that's.
Okay, it is eight thirty six and we're back in session. So we are going to proceed to four point one, discussion and possible action on the motion to approve the development agreement term sheet for Caldwell CAD PID numbers two seven six nine eight, two seven seven zero zero and two seven seven four six initiated by Sigma Grafted LLC.
I'll make a motion to table this item four point one for further discussion with our city manager and attorney with the Sigma Grafted LLC.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
I'm opposed.
Okay, so I'm in favor of table in it. So the motion will carry. Okay, four point two, discussion, possible action, a motion to approve resolution to expose, express no opposition of the creation of municipal utility district mud in the city of Martindale's extraterritorial jurisdiction initiated by Sigma Grafted LLC.
I make, I make a motion four point two to table this item for further discussion with our city attorney and city manager. I can say I didn't, okay, I made the motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Can we discuss now?
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, my discussion, I, I'm not against this project. I just didn't, I didn't get, I didn't, I haven't got the package to review it. This is a very big decision for all of us. I'm, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not, I'm opposed to that. I, I would like to have some more discussion with, with our attorney and you guys. It seems, it seems awfully, it's, 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 I, I like to think about things where I make a huge decision like this. And this is one of the best, biggest decisions that we'll do in this city and possible the future. And along with that, I want to make sure we do this in a timely manner because you do have a timeframe, I understand. So I'd like to fast track this as soon as possible. We have this discussion and with our, with our, with our two parties, because I think we were, y'all were in the discussion before we even got here. I mean, it was a last minute, you guys and our guys. So I would like to have, I don't know what timeframe we could do. How much time do you, do you need?
What, what, what are you talking about, Mike? Right now, we're talking about the resolution.
About the resolution. I'm talking about discussing the table for you two guys to do further discussion.
On, on the wording in the resolution?
On the wording of the, what the.
We can't, we can't discuss the development agreement on this.
We already voted. We already voted table.
The, the only discussion here is about the resolution.
But I would just.
I have a comment about this, I, I kind of don't like the way that this, the item four point two is worded. A motion to approve the resolution to express no opposition of the creation of a, of a mud and Sam R. This is ETJ initiated by the developer. So that's what it's saying, that we are going to approve the mud. That's not what this is, it's, it's approving the resolution which allows the developer to take the, to get permission from the legislature to. To go create the mud, to create, to get, yes, to be able to create the mud, that, am I saying that right?
Can I bring up the resolution on the screen?
Yes, bring up. Which is something we'll have to vote on next.
That's what we're voting on. Because Mike voted table. I mean, Mike made a motion.
The resolution here states in section one.
So.
To be filed to the twenty twenty three Texas Legislature.
So, so Jim, regardless of how the agenda item is worded, the, the agenda item is to either approve or deny the resolution.
Yes, I understand.
That we're looking at now.
I understand it, but this, it sounds like we're actually approving them to have a mud.
But, but that could not even legally happen at that point. Because the, understand that you will either be voting up or down on what's on the screen now, not.
Okay, could you, what is number is that resolution? Because the one I have here.
Three twenty.
Yeah, that's right. Twenty-three.
That's just allowing them to go to the legislature to create a mud.
Oh, okay, that's.
We're not approving.
Yes, the resolution for the city council of Martindale expressing no opposition to the legislation relating to the creation of the mud for the developer, right?
Yeah, that's right, so it's, it's either you are opposing the filing of the legislation or approving of the filing of the legislation.
And I basically table for further discussion.
So, so the motion on the table is to either table this resolution, to table.
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion? So all those in favor of tabling the resolution twenty, two thousand twenty-three dash oh three dash twenty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Oh, I said aye. So it's two ayes and two nays.
No, it's three nays, because I say nay too. So the motion is not. I did. It failed.
Okay.
It's not being tabled.
Right.
Okay.
It's not being tabled and you, you broke the tie then.
Right.
Okay, so.
So I make a move, motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh three dash two eight.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the resolution, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Well, I'll give them my best shot, I, I'm not against it, I'm not against this resolution, I just think we need more time to, to, to discuss this with the developer due to the, the magnitude of the project, that's all. I'm not against it, or.
And I would like to just say that my, my yes is just for them taking the document to the legislature. And it is going to take time for a development agreement. So right now, my yes is not saying yes to the, the development, it's not saying yes to a development agreement, it's not saying yes to anything about the lot size. All it is about them taking their form to the legislature for the mud. A development agreement is going to take time, that cannot happen within a week, it cannot happen within a month, that's going to take time. So that is what my yes is for.
Well, like I said. I, like I said, all I'm not, I'm not against it, I just believe, I think we need more time to review it, but.
It's still my understanding that they still have to come to this city to get approval for the mud.
I understand.
Before they can even take it to.
I just thought it was a little bit quick and not much time, but like I say, it's democracy in action.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh three dash twenty-eight. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Any opposed, I mean?
I'll say no.
I'll say no.
Okay, and I'll be the tiebreaker and I say yes. So the motion carries. So we will sign the resolution. Okay, four point three, discussion possible action, motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you. But I know that Mike made a motion to table four point one. And is there any way that we would, that we would, I could ask him to amend his motion to authorize a, whenever we do is to authorize to move forward for a full development agreement?
Well, so we can do that.
Can she make a motion to do that?
You can make multiple motions on, on a agenda item, if you, if you want to do that, you can make it.
Because what, what he is doing is just tabling for the, the, for the development.
Well, that's not really.
For the agreement.
It's for discussing between our bodies.
If, if you, if you want to make the motion to negotiate a full development agreement, someone seconds it for purposes of discussion, that you, you can't.
What was Mike, Mike just tabled it just to talk about the.
Mike tabled, tabled the agenda item so that there would be further negotiation of the term sheet. And what it sounds like you want to do is move on from the term sheet and negotiate a full development agreement.
Well, because I just, just since they're here, since we're here and we were talking about it, a term sheet is still just something set to the terms before the development agreement. So even if it's in the term sheet, we still have to go in and work with.
Term sheet is getting engaged, development agreement is getting married.
Let's just, we'll, we'll just stay engaged. I just want to be engaged.
That's a good way to say it.
Jan, uh, Jan wants to get married.
Let's get down to the.
So, so, so if someone wants to make the, the motion that we, we get married, then we can have that discussion.
Let's do the full development agreement. You know, we're wasting time by doing a little.
We've got a lot of time, we've got time on our hands.
Well, we want to wait and see if the mud passes.
The things can happen at the same time.
I mean, why not work, work on this, the development agreement?
We're, we're discussing, it's not.
Why do, why waste time on a small?
It's letting our people negotiate with the developer.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, make a motion.
Okay, so, um. Okay, so I would like to make a motion on four point one to authorize our city attorney and our city administrator to work with and discuss and authorize to make a full development agreement.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion?
Well, discussion is, when I said, when I tabled, did that mean to negotiate with the developer? I mean, that's what we're going to do anyway, I mean, we're, we're way, we're way ahead of ourselves, I mean, we've already approved them to go to West Lake, that's the first step, we, you know, it passed, it passed. This is the next step and we're still doing that, we're still negotiating, so.
It'll be on.
I, I, I think the distinction is, do we want to negotiate a term sheet, which is truncated version? Or do we want to shift our focus to looking at a, a, a full version? That, that is the only distinction.
Well, because even if we, even if we do, even if we do the term sheet, that's still just like, you know, we're still going to have to work through everything. So even if you like what's in the term sheet, even if we go to the development agreement, you could say you like what's in the term sheet, but then you don't like the development agreement.
But Sonya, to come up with a develop, it's going to take a long time to do, development agreements are this, are thick, they're huge, a huge document.
Are y'all, are y'all at a point in place where y'all have something already set? Or is this something like if we did say to start working on that you could, or?
Ready to get married. There you go.
Okay.
Do you, do you, to, to save the city kind of money, would Grafton be willing to take a crack at the first round?
Of the developer?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, Mike, there are certain things that you wanted.
I'm, 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 I think we're done with, with my motion to table it because we're going to discuss it anyway, this is the very first step of a very long process, very long process. So I think we're way ahead of ourselves personally, I mean, I'm, I'm standing with my table, that's, that's how I feel about it. I mean, we're not, we're not rejecting a development agreement, we're just talking, we're starting the first process of it.
No, but like for me as a council member, I think where real work starts to happen is being a part of the big picture. Even what's, even what's in the, in the form, the first sheet, you know, a, after the, the steps that were explained, what's even in the first sheet, we'll still have to go through the next step. And then we might not like even that, what's, what's in the development agreement. Like you have certain things that you want.
The thing is, this is a timely thing, I mean, this development agreement is going to take a long time to put together, that's huge document. This is a first process in determining a development agreement.
So, so there we.
Y'all see what you want, man, y'all, y'all made, y'all made a motion.
And it's not what we want to do, man, what you want to do, it's like we as council members are responsible for our community. We're the ones that set the standard. So if you want what you want in this development agreement, now's going to be your time.
No, it's not, no, it's not, because all I'm saying is, by table it, I want our people to talk to their people, that's all I'm saying.
But our people is not you.
We, we, we've already not, they've.
I think, I think that we're getting off track.
You're right.
If we, if we're, all we're saying is, let, let's start negotiating, that's all we're saying, let's start negotiating. So that's all we're really making a motion on, and so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
I did, I did, I said, I made the motion.
So I have two ayes, all opposed, any opposed?
I'll say aye.
Okay, so I have three in favor and one nay, the motion carries. Okay, so thank you all.
Back to Houston, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think, we're going to do what you want to do, we're going to continue to negotiate, we're going to negotiate towards a good marriage, so.
We'll hope it's a good marriage, okay?
Thank you.
That's why you gotta have prenup, man.
You know what, I'm going to ask Marcy, I'm asking Marcy.
Okay, okay, so we're going to go to four point three, we still have a lot of stuff to go through. Motion to accept the resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four dash oh six, authorizing the submission of an application for the twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four Texas CD BCG Community Development Fund Competition. And we've been accepted, so this has to do with the grant.
Right, so, um, you guys might be hearing a lot about grants right now recently from me, this is with the Texas Department of Agriculture. There's two resolutions that are tied to this grant, I'm working closely with Thomas Turek and Langford Community Development. This is us promising that if we do get approved, we will match ten thousand dollars for a five hundred thousand dollar return. The possible improvements that we've determined are street improvements, infrastructure improvements. The, the exact details of this project haven't yet been submitted, but this is what we're working towards. We hope to have the complete application and by May sixth.
Oh, so when I said we were approved, what I meant was we were approved to apply for the grant. That was the first.
There's a, there's a two, yeah, there's a two-step process, we had to, we had to submit a basically synopsis of what we might want to do, which was evaluated and then we were invited to submit a full application.
So it's ten thousand dollars for us to submit to the grant?
If, if we are awarded a grant, our, our matching component would be ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, or a five hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's right. So i- i- if council believes that using ten thousand dollars in the future, not, not next month, maybe in even the next fiscal year, it will come from the general fund and utility fund. It was worded that way because if we do decide to go with wastewater improvements, it would be recommended to use the utility fund. However, street and drainage improvements can come from the general fund.
But just to clarify, once, once, unless we get the grant, then we put ten, right?
That's right.
I mean, it's not, it's not immediate, it's, it's kind of like the Northwest Road project. Our matching component comes much later in the build phase.
Okay, I make, I make a motion to set the resolution twenty-three, twenty twenty-three oh four dash oh six, authorizing submission of an application for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four TXCDBG Community Development. Competition.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
So the next resolution is your approval to apply of the grant that I just mentioned. So, so the city representatives are the mayor, city administrator, city secretary and city council.
Okay, I make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four dash oh six dash oh two, authorizing signatures for the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four application and future grants administered through the Texas Department of Agriculture, TBA. Go Grants Online.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the next one is motion to approve nine thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars for a six-month. If, this would last six months for treating the lagoons to help reduce the sledge.
Can we, can we, yeah, you're going to get there and discuss it.
Yes.
Mike, as you asked earlier about the sledge and the wastewater report, this is, this, this will remove the sludge from the ground, it's, it's, these are these buckets of, oh, I hate to call them enzymes, but they're, they're buckets of chemicals that you put into a wastewater plant and it'll eat away the sledge. We're.
How, I, I, I read this document, how affected is it compared by dredging? How much, how more, how more effective is dredging than this?
This is probably significantly more effective because of the cost.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the cost factor, I know it's going to be a lot more expensive.
One of the, one of the benefits to this method, other than just straight dredging, is we also have a pH balance issue right now. We suspect as part of the sledge buildup, this would also, we anticipated helping, helping to correct that pH balance issue.
Okay, I guess my next question, has this company ever done a pond similar situation as ours and what kind of results did they have? Like, I saw the one about the, you know, it's, it's X amount of sludge was removed, blah, blah, blah. Can you, can you bring that up?
In their, in their letter, they mentioned that out of a one acre lagoon system, they were able to reduce about six inches or roughly twenty-one thousand.
Can we verify that? I mean, is there any way to, I mean.
They're, they're specialists and that's what they do, they mostly operate in Texas.
We used them before, and how, how many other companies did you go through? It's all written to Pete, so Pete apparently did all this, all this work.
My question is, I mean, how, I mean, compared to dredging for sludge removal, I guess we can't, that question won't be answered.
One thing I heard about the sludge removal is that it's considered hazardous waste, that it has to be, it takes.
One thing I heard about, uh, the sludge removal is that it's considered hazardous waste, so there has to be, it takes, you know, there's a big expansion.
So, so it, it will be. Uh, a useful, um, comparison would be when our pumps go out at the lift station and we have to have a truck come out and pump out the sewer contents out of that lift station. Part of, it's about ten thousand dollars. A big cost is the time of the truck being there pumping. But the largest component of that cost is the hauling and disposal of that truck. And so if you consider, I, I'd have to go back and look at a, at a, um, a receipt of what, what the lineup cost is. But say even half it, it's five thousand dollars per truck. It, a truck isn't gonna capture a whole heck of a lot. And so.
It's a lot more effective.
This, this potentially a savings, maybe fifty percent. Um, it's hard to say. We didn't get a, a quote on it because, our expert identified this as a cost-effective means and I, I.
And our expert's Pete.
And our expert's Pete. And also he, he talked with, um, with our, our engineer and he was, he was on board with this.
You know, I'm always skeptic.
We also asked the, the company as well about dredging and they recommended that that is your last resort.
Okay, I understand. I'm, I'm always disillusioned there. I'm always skeptic on this. I mean, I, I, I have, I have a problem with this, but I would like to have, I mean, just in a letter, they say their perspective, this is removed. I, it would be nice if we had some sort of a prior job that they did this or documentation.
Maybe I could get you one here, if you give me a few.
I would like to have that.
Uh, and while we're, you're looking that up, uh, what do you recommend? Three months, six months? Well, you're asked, the resolution is asking for six months, but I mean.
Well, it comes in big bags.
Say, say a gig bat.
Do we want, yeah, well, the, the prices are different. The three months is the six thousand dollars, the, the six months is the ten thousand dollars or ninety-nine twenty-four. So.
You're getting, you're getting a, if, if we did the three month, we would likely see some benefit. Um, but for half the cost of, of the initial three months, we get another three months and, and give ourselves some more assurance.
Now, uh, are we gonna check it after three months, even if we approve the six months now?
We check it every month with the pH levels on our wastewater.
So if everything is okay, then they only need.
Should we get any developers to pay for this? I mean, since we're gonna give up our plant.
Well.
My.
I have a couple of resources.
Just a minute, Jan was talking. Yeah, just a minute.
I'll, I'll get all the time.
Okay, go ahead and finish. Go ahead and finish.
I'll bang.
Um, all right, I'm just gonna make a motion to approve the nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars for a six-month lagoon sludge nutrient reduction packaging. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have discussion now?
Yes, we can.
Can we find, Adrian, can we find some data from a, uh, on a previous project?
I have some lengthy.
I'd like to see some data.
I, I had some lengthy webinars on that, that they were counseling me on. It's been a little bit of time since I've last reviewed it. But I could definitely forward those to you right now if you like.
Just, just, it would be nice information enough.
Are there several of these companies around? Are these kinda rare? He did all of that. We can't ask him.
There, there are plenty of companies that will sell product, but the product, they're all, I, I believe this is the one that, that does this product. I think Aquam.
Oh, really?
Bugman, whatever, is, is a, a vendor.
Yeah, and what it says in here is that they have these tablets and powder that they, they put out on a boat, out into the pond, and it disperses it into the areas that need it the most. Yeah, I'm just kinda like.
I, I just like to know, uh, just prior projects, blah, blah, blah. I, I just don't, I just don't like to see in that letter. It'd be nice to say.
Yeah, it would be nice to see a before and after.
And it'd be nice to have Pete here, but again, he's not.
Yeah, well.
He has used it in the past and he felt that it worked really well.
I mean, do we, is this something that's time, timeline? I've already made.
Uh, little bit. I mean, this, this is in relation to. Right. This, this is in relation to our TCQ permit. Uh, our last inspection, we rated a little bit over. And TCQ is asking us to, to, to fix.
Well, and we have to renew our permit next year.
Right, okay.
So we've gotta get things under control.
We gotta make an effort to.
You get that data to me or to us, that's all.
Yeah, I, I could fix something.
Any more discussion? I mean, cause we can get more, we probably can bind another company if you'd rather, but we do have a motion and a second on the table. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Just get that information.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
No, no, I, I didn't say aye when you said, oh, so I'm aye. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Just, just tell Pete to give some.
So the motion carries.
Uh, I'll, I'll contact them.
That way we, you kinda know.
I heard you say.
I just, I just didn't, I just thought.
And then this other.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the next one, which still is dealing with the, uh, now this one's the, uh, tree, the lift stations. Motion to approve seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two to pump and clean out the lift stations.
This is a, this is an annual maintenance activity that we do, um, that helps clear the lift station from solids and fats and other things, um, that get built up over, over the year. Um, doing this kind of type of thing is a preventive maintenance off, uh, thing for us to prevent, um, the, the pumps from getting ruined and, and maintains our, our, our lift station. The cost here, there's only one proposal, but the cost is in line with prior year costs.
When was the last time we've done it?
Luke, uh, a little over a year ago, about a year. But maybe a little more.
Okay, I make a motion to approve, uh, the spending of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars for pumping clean lift stations of all Martin Dell lift stations.
I second that.
Um, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Uh, is this, can we pay this out of some grant that we have? Uh, didn't we have a grant to cover some of our?
Yeah, so.
Facilities.
Yeah, we, we, we can use ARPA funds. Um, and as we get to the end of the year, we'll look at our burn rates within the utility fund and make use of those ARPA funds as we go forward. I, 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 I don't wanna say right now that we will pay for our ARPA, may not need to. Um, we might use, use some of the funds for other projects.
That's something we need approval of anyway.
Um, not necessarily. Uh, if we use the ARPA funds, I come back with an update on our ARPA plan. Uh, previously, the city council approved it, I think it was a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for sewer and wastewater, um, system, uh, maintenance activities and upgrades. So this could go in a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars we set aside for that. Or, um, if we can cover it within the annual budget, we'll try to, um, we'll, we'll see.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, the next one should be easy. Do we want to have the parade on July first, Saturday? Or on Tuesday, July the fourth? People are already starting to call and ask, cause they're trying to get their schedules together.
I had one, one of us, one of my constituents say they, they always like to have it on the fourth, but that's all I've heard.
Saturday's the first, right?
Yeah, Saturday is the first.
Or have it on Tuesday.
The library is doing some activities that afternoon. Um, I guess kinda like what they did last year, maybe not as extensive, cause Katie's not involved, but the library's gonna have like a fishing pond and different, I, I don't know.
Children's carnival.
On the fourth?
On the first.
We don't have the volunteers this year to help us.
Oh.
So you're doing it on Saturday, the first?
I don't know what we're doing.
Oh, is that one you had?
Oh, so you might not do it.
I don't know.
You had that, that big water thing? So the library may or may not do some high-end activities on Saturday.
I don't know.
It's a lot, a lot of people like to have a parade on July fourth, actually, Tuesday. That's what I do.
Yeah. It's, and it's a holiday anyway, so you'll find that a lot of people are, I said, have that day off.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Clinton.
Uh, I make a motion that we have the Independence Day parade on July fourth of twenty twenty-three.
Oh, what time?
Uh, it was the usual time.
The usual, like ten or eleven?
Probably ten.
Like ten?
Ten AM.
At ten, ten AM on July fourth.
I second that. I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. All right, so the next one is about the parking ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four dash oh six. And I'm gonna let Adrian talk about that.
Hey, so as y'all remember from our last workshop, um, we have come up with a parking ordinance uh, for designating what parks or what spaces will be, um, monitored for, pay for parking. The consensus of the last workshop appears that the appetite for monetizing it is Alabase Park and Phase One. We did set the rate at ten dollars, um, however this is amendable. And this parking, pay for parking is only applicable during park hours. So you could only use this, your all-day parking is really only effective with our chapter ninety-three point oh four, which is like seven in the morning till eight AM or nine.
Can I make a point? I don't know if we wanna put the rate of ten dollars in there, cause we, we don't, who knows the future will bring. I think we just need to just say we're charged.
And, and we could amend that if, if so.
Cause you're, you're kinda locking yourself in in case you wanted to change it in the future. I think it'd be best to leave that blank.
Um, it does state that the ordinance, the ordinance does state that we'll rely on a third-party service to regulate parking for us or to be the mediator of receiving transactions.
And, and we'll come back and amend this ordinance once we get the deed for this call, right?
Can, can we take that, can we take that grade out? Just leave it?
Yeah, we, we can make that in a motion. Let me just walk through the rest of the ordinance.
Sorry, go ahead.
Um.
Uh, what, it's seven days a week?
Yeah, so it here says, uh, all days, that at this park, you'll be charged ten dollars. But again, that can be amended.
Well, it just says all day. It doesn't say every day.
Well, it doesn't exactly say that. Doesn't, it doesn't exempt the day.
To be determined by council each year.
Oh, okay.
That needs to be changed in the motion if we're gonna do it.
You, you just wanna go through the whole thing and bring up what we wanna say, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, um, yeah, third-party vendors will enforce and monetize the parking. The third-party vendors could be a towing service and maybe an app that we may talk about later. Um, we also did add the residents don't pay for parking. As, so as long as you register with the city, you show a valid form of identification, you prove that you're more into residence, and you give us up to two license plates that are amendable at any time from the original applicant. Uh, all vehicles must register, even if you're a resident, when you're gonna pay for parking. Um, those who fail to meet those terms or fail to pay for parking will be subject to towing. And people who do not have to pay for parking and are exempt from paying other than residents are faculty, um, people, peace officers, who don't want towing our police vehicles, an ambulance, or physicians, operators, and so forth. The, and this, this ordinance is only enforceable if there's proper signage at the zone. So it's, for instance, Alabase Park, since it's in the regulatory floodway, if it gets, if the storm takes out a sign, you shouldn't be towed, cause you wouldn't have known. Um, now, there's some comments and people wanted to add to this ordinance or something to give.
It's only thing is take, take the ten dollars out, that's all.
The rate is maybe determined from time to time by these ministry, city administrators.
Yes.
And then I.
I would hate to put it on me or the subsequent.
Yeah, I think it should be council thing.
I, I think putting it in ordinance helps make it enforceable and it requires a vote by city council to, to change it. I think that could be a useful procedure. This isn't, city council's gonna change ordinance same time once. So I think.
So you agreeing to leave that?
I, I, I would agree to leave ten, ten dollars and then it'd be a simple vote by city council and a new ordinance.
Say if the tow truck is going to charge, take their cut from it. And then that only leaves Martin Dell, like, say, you know, cause the tow truck service is gonna have to, to do their rate. So it's gonna be a percentage that we get. So we don't even know what the tow truck is gonna be.
The, in all likelihood, if someone doesn't pay and they get towed, or we're not issuing a parking ticket, so we're not gonna see ten dollars. But everything else that would go to the tow truck for that service. The city would, the city would not receive revenue from that. They, the tow truck would keep, keep that. And they're responsible for making all the reports to the state and all, all of it. They're, they're, they own the whole liability.
Okay, and then another thing that I wanted to say is that, like, say if the library does have an event that we're able to like not do the parking then, like, charge for parking. If it's like nonprofits that have an event at the park and they're registering their event with the city, yeah, that the parking fee be waived.
Okay.
Um.
That'd be part of the resolution. Would you make that an event at the council?
And what about?
Remember to put that in as a notice?
Yes.
And.
We, that'd be, that'd be somewhat difficult to, I mean, the only way to do that is to, it becomes, if someone has an event in the park, say in the morning, and then people stay after the event, parking the whole day, I'm, I'm okay if the answer's yes. I'm just.
Well, like.
It becomes, it becomes then a problem of how do we inform the tow company not to tow? Do we just, just because that there's a, and a, an event, uh, that's probably how to do it.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, that would, that would.
Charge of the event is in charge of giving out event passes that'll last all day.
In the event a vehicle has a temporary pass, it shall not be towed.
And then it grabs that.
Such and such hour.
Uh-huh.
Well, I'm just.
Nine and one.
We, we can, we can have, in the, in the event that a vehicle has a valid event pass, because we can even put the event pass, put the hours of it.
Of, of the event.
Right.
And the date.
Yeah, so in the event.
Only valid this time, this, through this time, this date.
Right, and, and we should notify the towing company, but valid permit for December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
Kite day.
Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, you know.
Fourth of July would apply.
The, the kite, the kite day did have a problem, because what happened is the parking lot got filled up and they were starting to park down the street. And Kevin called to see what we should do and we didn't do.
They didn't use the parking on Fannin?
Well, I think they did. They did go across the street to Fannin and they came down, some people came downtown. But it was a little bit of a problem.
There was more cars on the curb than there was in the Fannin Street parking lot.
What about, where does, oh, additional parking?
Yeah, there, there's no signage there to tell people that there's additional parking across the street. But then we've already gotten to those discussions with text out about them not wanting to paint the crosswalk there again. They had told us they do not wanna paint a crosswalk there.
Why can't we just?
Yeah, I think we ought to, we ought to put some kind of, let's put some kind of signage, so it looks like, you know, put some goalposts.
We get trouble, can't we? Uh, can't for that, and we, as text offs.
Well, we were just saying.
That doesn't mean we can't put our own little.
Additional parking across the street. Go post, like, run, run through across the highway real fast.
But there's already, watch out for pedestrians.
I don't know if that's not.
So we got that, Adrian. We just have the, you know, for, um, registered city. So we got that, Adrian. We just have the, you know, for, um, registered city events, not nonprofit, whatever. Um, the, the parking pass, city would be in communication with the tow truck.
So what we can do is we can, so that this ordinance goes forward. We can make that part of, um, an event ordinance. Um, and, and the event ordinance.
That'll be good.
Tell me to advertise it to the citizens to register their vehicle before they start towing.
We will.
Yeah, we, we.
We will. Don't worry.
We have warnings and, you know, for people that are there, I mean, we can still put up signage.
Because, yeah, e- even at the end of the section it says, um.
And it'll be.
It won't be enforceable unless there's proper signage.
And all people downtown are going to be charged for parking anyway. It's just if you, you never go park in the park, so.
Yeah, but if the businesses really start growing out here.
We don't, we're not going to charge downtown parking. They'll, they'll charge for downtown.
But a lot of additional parking at Allen Bates would be nice. When does parks close? Ten?
Well, this.
Nine.
Uh, I don't have any problem with it. I have no problem with it in there. I'm not.
That ten dollar figure is often expensive among low-income people.
I think so too.
Well, correct, so I'll have.
That's why I think we ought to.
Some people think it's not enough.
We have, we're gonna bring a leave.
So do we, do we wish to leave the ten?
Dollar should be. I don't think.
This, this ten dollar rate would apply.
Elite ten in there.
I know.
We, we can wish to leave. Okay, but handicapped will pay.
But I'm not gonna.
Handicapped people do not pay at parking meters. When they put their handicap thing on their car in a parking meter, they are not required to pay.
So, so this is more like, um, parking in a parking facility, like a parking garage where you pay at the gate. This, this is, the, the, this is more like a facility type of parking arrangement rather than a, a meter. Because it's not per space.
Okay. Uh, and we do all want to just say that it's just for residents of Martindale and we've all agreed to that, that don't.
Residents are entitled to free parking.
Okay.
By successive submitting a free parking application that will distribute and have ready.
Up to two license plates. So if there's a household in Martindale with two separate cars, they would both be entitled to not pay. What if I have three?
You can change it. It's amendable.
I want to hang tag.
Okay, I'd like a motion. Make a motion to approve parking ordinance two zero two three dash zero four dash zero six.
You want to signify any changes?
I, I'm flexible.
There's a lot of changes that need to be added to that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Uh, we can change the ordinance anytime, so pretty much. If, if we find that it doesn't even work.
Yeah, but we already agreed on some.
Anytime.
The only, the only cost is the recording fees to American Legal Publishing, but.
The only thing that, that was going to be amended, but we're going to put it in the event ordinance was the parking for the, um, events that were registered to the city through, by a nonprofit. But otherwise, everything else is going to stay.
Well, I thought we just started.
And, and until, and until that, that ordinance comes in, the city staff and I will make sure we, we accommodate for that. If someone comes in, it's, it's very rare. It's typical when my buddy comes and asks me to use the car. So we'll keep that in mind.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we all pretty much agreed in the workshop of the ten, ten dollars, I think.
Okay. Okay, so we have the motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed?
Uh, I don't want to vote. Because I can go to the workshop and I don't feel educated enough.
Recuse yourself.
But that's not a reason to recuse.
I abstain.
Oh, it isn't?
No.
Okay, you can vote, you can vote. You can vote January. You, you started up.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Vote.
The motion carries.
But we're gonna have to really study this and see how many cars are not going to park in the park in downtown parking.
Yeah, this is a brand-new thing we're trying.
Yeah, let's, let's just try.
Last Saturday, there was a big van from Texas Bay now. And they also had a trailer full of, uh, canoes and kayaks. Would you charge them for two vehicles?
We're, we're not, we, we're talking about the parking. We.
This is a thanks.
But that was temporary. They just went and dropped it off and then left.
No, it was in the parking.
Well, they're gonna have, they're gonna have.
They put their, their canoe stand up, so they're up the river, pointing them.
Oh.
Over there before and after God day.
Well, that's the same thing that Mike and I discussed, that if you've got a truck with a trailer, then you would take up two spaces. That, that, that's exactly what she said was happening at Allen Bates Park. So would they pay for two spaces? I would say yes.
Okay, did we already vote on that?
Probably got a strong applause, yes.
Are we done?
We have one more question.
We've got one more thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's another thing we're gonna have to do.
Park mobile service.
Okay, we're gonna move on to four point nine. Uh, motion to approve Park Mobile, Mobile Service Agreement between the City of Martindale and Park Mobile. Am I saying that right?
Mobile.
It feels funny. Park mobile.
I make a motion to approve.
Well, wait, wait, we're, we're getting reading through first.
Yeah. I already read it. I already discussed it.
Council, at the workshop asked, at least there were some questions, how much does Park Mobile gain? So at least I might as well explain some of the.
Okay. Adrian's talking.
Sorry, Adrian.
Some of the finances that were asked in the workshop was how much does the city earn? And how much does Park Mobile take home? Just for user fees, by the way, it's forty cents plus three percent. So they'll gain three percent of the ten dollars and forty cents. That's how much Park Mobile keeps and every month on the fifteenth or before of the month, we'll receive a paycheck from Park Mobile. We'll be able to see how much money we get from parking.
And if it's worth it.
Okay, one thing that we did not discuss though, that goes back to the ordinance is that the money received from this Park Mobile park thing goes to the park. The money goes to the park, not to the general fund. The money goes to the park. We have said nothing about where this money goes.
Oh, we should have done that in the one before.
Yeah, I mean, we, we completely overlooked that. And that's something that initially sparked my concern about this is wanting money for the parks.
But even if it does go in the general fund, if it, they can always move it to that line item.
I mean, it's about.
Your ordinances typically have an allocation to a fund. I, I, on top of my head, I can't think.
You can, um, it become, it would not, it'd be in the special restricted fund similar to the sales tax revenue for street and road maintenance or hotel tax. It would, it would recreate a restricted fund.
Okay.
As, as up to city council wanted to do that, the benefits of not doing that is when you get to areas like Skull Bridge, if that becomes subject to this or if we go to downtown areas or anywhere else outside of the park that is being, that has to pay for parking. I'm not sure at, right now, whether Park Mobile will separate out the, the check they give us in revenue by area and whether it would be easily for us to know how much came from park, how much came from somewhere else. And so if we, right now, it would make a lot of sense, but if we expand this to other areas, there's a potential that we might not be able to differentiate between parking in the park versus parking elsewhere in the city. It's unknown.
Give us a different code for each. Could we put it like in the general fund, restricted fund? Can we put it in a separate, like a separate category?
I didn't read that.
We, 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 we can, um, again, I'm not sure what type of, um, uh, invoice, but what, what sort of information we receive along with the payment from Park Mobile. That's something that, when, as we go forward, we can ask them to identify. It's likely going to be the case that each parking area is going to have its own unique code.
Okay.
So if it gives us like five hundred dollars from this area, two hundred dollars from that area, three hundred dollars from that area, and we have that information, then we probably could separate it out. But if, but if it, if it's one of those situations of Park Mobile just puts automatic deposit in or bank account of ten thousand dollars this month, where did it come from? We don't, we wouldn't necessarily have that data.
But we would want to explain the, the different zones that, say, if we do eventually charge at Skull Bridge, well, that's not a park. Downtown is not a park. So I wouldn't expect the money from Skull Bridge unless it's become a park to go into the park fund. I'm only saying that these two parking lots that relate to the park, the monies from that should go, should go to the park.
But like, I don't think we need to make it like, we get it. It's like, it's just math. You get the, you get the summary of how much you've made. Whenever we budget the amount for the park, we'll say, oh, that last year, the parks made X amount from that. Why can't we budget this amount for the parks?
For just a lot of?
Yes, I mean.
We have a, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just reinforcing that.
Yeah.
If it hadn't been.
Instead of making it in a restricted fund.
The, the parks, we had already increased the, them to twenty-five thousand, correct, is what they're getting. So then like in three months, or I'm sure that summertime, it's going to be more money. During winter times, it's probably going to be less. So we would want, probably want to assess it at the, whenever you're going over the budget of the amount of the total year. And then we would say, hey, the parks made, you know, thi- this parking made X amount of dollars and then we just increase their budget.
Well, I might we just put a line out. And, and Dwight can just put a lot out of.
Oh, park, park, parking revenue.
Park Mobile will just have a lot on, and we know exactly, you'll know exactly how much we got and then we can make a motion to transfer.
Are they gonna have a booth?
No, it's all by, it's all by your phone.
All text.
I say.
And if you don't have a smartphone, you can always call me.
So, there you go.
Access me.
And sorry for, I, I did make the motion too quick. Sorry, I apologize. You shouldn't.
Mikey?
Because I've already, I've already sent in this document many times. Go ahead.
All right, well, now you can make the motion.
I already have. No, I, I can't, I haven't made a motion. I did not make a motion.
No, the last motion we need is to, whether or not to approve Park Mobile.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve Park Mobile Service Agreement between the City of Martindale and Park Mobile LLC.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion carries. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at nine thirty PM on April sixth.
I'll second that.
We're, we're not going to talk about future things?
Oh.
It's not on our agenda.
Not on there.
And I'm not talking about it.
I said about bicycle, rodeo and rodeo appreciation and event ordinance.